Good evening, everyone. Today is Monday, October 17th, 7:00 PM. This is a special planning board meeting. We are, we have a very short agenda here today. Doesn't mean it's going to be a short meeting, but it's a short agenda. We have a little bit of feedback.
He's just going to mute the laptop.
Yes, turn off your mic.
Yeah, the mic's off. He just has to mute the speaker.
Gotcha.
Testing.
We're getting there. We have a little bit of feedback, so bear with us.
Yeah, turn your volume all the way down. There we go.
There we go. All right.
Nope.
Just a tiny bit.
Hold on, that might be.
It could be on my screen.
No, it's, you can hear him out of that laptop.
Yeah, that's weird.
It's because you're plugged in through HDMI, so the audio control might not.
Gotcha. Let me see if I can.
And you've got to mute it on your end, right, Rich?
How's that? Test one.
Test one, two, three. Test. Sounds good. Okay, great. So I'll try and pick up where I left off. We have a short agenda, brief agenda, but it doesn't mean the meeting's going to be brief. We do have two interviews tonight for master plan and then any unanticipated new business. So the meeting was previously posted on our town website, and this meeting is in-person and via Zoom. So we do have some participants joining us by Zoom. We have one board member who will, who is not on Zoom right now, but he is anticipated to join us by Zoom. So we'll go ahead and get started. Our first interview this evening is at 7:00. I know we're running a little bit behind, a few minutes behind. 7:00 with Beta Group. And why don't you, I'm going to pass it over to them and let you introduce yourselves. Do we need to introduce all the board, Rich? Do we?
No.
No, I don't. So I'll let you introduce yourselves and then take it from there. We have, I forget the exact criteria that you gave them for the...
15-minute presentation.
Okay.
And the presentation should be hopefully focused not what's already in the written proposal, and then 45 minutes for questions and answers.
Okay, great.
Rich, I can't share my screen, but maybe we can get the introduction started and then...
I can make you co-host.
Hold on. Okay. Thank you.
While we're doing that, thanks for having us. We appreciate the opportunity. My name is Bill McGrath. I'm a vice president in the transportation group with Beta. I'm also the principal in charge, so I'll be supporting Jack, our project manager, with resources and staffing.
I'm Jack Madden, engineering manager with Beta. Jeff Max, sorry. Jeff Max Tudes.
As long as the light's green, you're good. It's really just for everybody that's remote.
Yep, Jeff Max Tudes. I'm a transportation planner with Beta. I lead the transportation planning group. Have over 35 years' experience, and I've done over a dozen master plans throughout Massachusetts and New England.
If y'all can hear me, I'm going to introduce myself. I'm Emily Slotnick. I'm part of the Beta Group team as well. I'm the climate resilience manager at Beta. I have quite some experience in master plans as well. I've been doing planning for about 12 years and natural hazard mitigation for five years after that. Really excited to be here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
And if you can hear me, I'm Judy Barrett with Barrett Planning Group, and thank you for accommodating us remotely. I'm up in Maine at a conference, but very happy to be participating in this. I've worked on, gosh, close to probably 30 master plans, mostly in Massachusetts, led many of them, and also been a team member on many, as we are in this case. So delighted to meet everybody, albeit through Zoom.
Jack's going to give the presentation, but as Jeff and Judy mentioned, we've got a lot of experience with master plans for a number of communities as well as other planning efforts, both individually, but maybe more importantly, we've worked with Judy on a number of projects as well. So we're very familiar with each other. We have a very good working relationship with each other. And I think we also have a good working relationship through the, with the town, with Rich, with the planning board through our peer review work, with ZBA through our peer review work, as well as the Metacoma Greenway feasibility study, also some stormwater asset management work, and ADA transition plan work. So I think we have a good working knowledge of the town and the staff and folks that we've worked with, so.
Thanks, Bill. And again, my name is Jack Madden. I'm the project manager on the Norfolk Metacoma, I'm sorry, the Norfolk Master Plan. You know, as Bill mentioned, both Beta and Barrett have extensive experience with, throughout New England, with municipalities like Norfolk. And we'll bring this combined regional experience to bear on the Norfolk Master Plan. Beta and Barrett have been a team before. We, most recently, have been working in local communities, including Medfield, Tisbury, and Walpole, where we had various stages of completion with those plans. Outside of Massachusetts, Beta's worked with Barrett on the Coventry Rhode Island Master Plan, as well as in 2021, Beta and Barrett were given an award from the New Hampshire Planning Association for their work in Derry, New Hampshire, and their comprehensive plan As Bill mentioned, Beta's no stranger to Norfolk as well. We've worked with various departments on planning studies, with asset management, with compliance reviews and assessments, as well as peer review. And, you know, we'll use that familiarity with some of the folks here in Norfolk to, you know, to understand the ongoing initiatives and then take a deeper dive into the workings of the town as we get into the master plan. So the town has specified a phased approach for this master plan development. In Phase 1, we'll take a look at where you're at right now. We will, as well as listen to your interest of where you want to go, from this, we'll establish and confirm your goals and objectives. And in Phase 2, we will work with you to develop strategies for getting to where you want to go. We will then present the master plan to the community and to build consensus and develop the final master plan document to help move the town toward the future together. We will study these key elements shown here on the screen. We will report back how these different elements are important in and of themselves, and we'll also study and investigate how they interact and work together in a way that makes sense to the town. So we know that the town population has been growing at a steady rate over the last 20 years, and we expect the growth to continue. So in a minute, Bill will be able to address any questions you may have about how the town might continue to provide the good services to the community, like public safety, schools, water supply. Also, we recognize the challenges of maintaining local character while developing, you know, opportunities for economic growth. And Judy Barrett is with us tonight. She'll be able to address those questions later and have a discussion about how that will go. Also, you know, we know that the town is a complete streets town. We'll take a look at some opportunities that may be out there to fund the improvements and continue to along that initiative as well. And Emily Slotnick is here to discuss how we'll incorporate sustainability throughout the project as we develop the master plan. You know, our approach will be to develop a master plan that sets aspirational goals with realistic expectations and using current best practices. The process will start with a review of the 2007 master plan, and we'll take a look at how the progress from, the recommendations from that plan played out over 15 years, and we'll be able to get a better sense for the capacity of the town and understand where there may be some blind spots. And we'll identify the town's strengths as well as its vulnerabilities. We'll be thinking about implementation from the very beginning as we start work on the master plan. Our process will employ a matrix format, which will help us organize the goals, strategies, and actions with the niche element. And then the implementation matrix will be a critical component of the final master plan document. Implementation strategies that are based on actionable items with short, medium, and long-term outcomes, and potential early action items identified during the development of the master plan, will be brought to the town's attention to take advantage of any immediate availability of funds or opportunities. So with the town engagement, that'll begin with a review of the previous planning documents. We will request a town tour at the beginning of the project shortly after the kickoff to get familiar with some of the key issues that the town would like to address and identify. Otherwise, we anticipate regular meetings with the steering committee to keep the project on track. If this, if Beta can be helpful in seating that steering committee, we'll do what we can to help the town with developing criteria or providing guidance there. We'll conduct interviews with department heads and town staff, and we will conduct public workshops with, where we will hear the many voices of the town of Norfolk to get their viewpoints. We have expertise with a variety of formats for reaching out and engaging stakeholders. This slide here shows that full range of engagement types. Down in the lower left, you can see the way we used to do it on a regular basis with in-person workshops, where we're shoulder to shoulder, you know, discussing some of the issues and identifying, you know, the key locations of how we can be helpful to include those items in the master plan. The upper right, we show an image of a pop-up event in which we are being flexible. We're bringing our presentation, we're meeting people where they're at. In this case, I believe that's a farmer's market, and we're getting feedback and generating some ideas and helpful discussion there. And then in the lower right, of course, that familiar virtual meeting space, that example is from the town of Medfield, and I'll get to that one in a minute. So we are equally comfortable in the virtual setting as we are in person. During COVID, we developed a capacity to use a virtual meeting room style engagement. This is an online window into the project. In fact, this example is from the West Haven Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan, where we're showing a picture of the actual council chamber in the city of West Haven, and presentation boards with links to reports, plans. We have a link to a survey where people can leave their input.
You got to fix the microphone on Zoom.
Oh.
Thank you.
If later in the question and answer period you'd like to take a quick walk through this virtual room, we do have the link, and we can, we can do that. Otherwise, I can follow up this meeting with the link, and you can take a closer look. But the advantage to this, of course, is that you can solicit questions and comments and allow people access to the project 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And that, we find that helpful to reaching certain groups of people. Here's that example of the Medfield webinar that we conducted as a workshop. The webinar format allows for discussion, presentation, also breakout rooms. We can put up polling questions that can be answered in chat boxes, and that, when we pair those results with more traditional surveys and tools, we can really get a good consensus amongst many different types of people in town. So Beta is a leader in using technology in the municipal planning process. We employ GIS into every project that goes through Beta. We will use it on this project to gather data, to share and analyze findings, and to develop mapping and figures for presenting complex ideas and data sets. And we will produce a master plan document that is rich in graphics, full of easy-to-understand figures and tables, and will be accessible to all. The 2023 Norfolk Master Plan will inform and enlighten, and will not just be a wish list for future needs, but will be a guiding document towards a bright and attainable and sustainable future. So let me summarize why you should select Beta and Barrett Team for this project. We are both Massachusetts-based, locally-owned firms. We have had success in teaming on past projects, and we share a broad experience of working for communities of similar size as Norfolk throughout New England. So we have that sort of broad perspective of what other towns are doing. We are public engagement experts, and we have a superior in-house GIS data collection capability. Also, we have a deep bench of experienced planners and engineers waiting to help us out, as well as years of experience providing professional services to the town of Norfolk. So with that, I'd like to open it up to questions and a discussion about the Beta Barrett Team.
Awesome. Who wants to go first?
I will. The steering committee seems to be an important group. Who chooses that? From where? And do you folks help to get the right people on that committee? That could work collaboratively with each other?
We can. I'm going to field that question over to Jeff.
Yeah. So yeah, there's several techniques to oversee a master plan. Steering committee is one of the most successful and popular, for good reason, because it helps drive the process from the beginning. Selection of the committee, we generally leave it up to the town, who they think is important to include as members. We can provide suggestions, of course, but you know your town and who the, you know, the players are in town on different committees and boards who want to be there. We would provide recommendations on the size. You don't want the committee too small. You don't want it too large, but, you know, effectively functioning committee would be somewhere eight to 12 people. If it gets beyond that, 15, it becomes pretty unruly. You want to select people or appoint people who are going to be committed throughout the process for a year. Sometimes that's challenging. Sometimes people, you know, will make it halfway through and maybe can't commit to that. So there's other ways to address that. Sometimes we have, sometimes we call them friends, friends to the steering committee, where maybe they're not appointed, you know, as a full committee member, but they can be, you know, active in certain roles during the process, so it gives them some stake as input in like a committee, but not a full, you know, committee appointee, but a little more than just, you know, a resident, you know, throughout, you know, throughout the process. So that can be a successful approach also. You know, Judy or Emily, I don't know if you'd like to chime in on this?
I always like to chime in, but maybe Emily, I'll defer to you.
Yeah, sure. I mean, the only thing I would add is that, as Jeff said, you know your community better than we do, at least at this point, and probably throughout the duration. But, you know, if there are specific community groups or interest groups that you know are going to want to be active during the planning process, that's something that we'll want to discuss upfront, how to best keep them engaged and keep them sort of feeling like their voices are being heard, but also making sure that their voices are productive to the planning process. So whether that's having, making sure that specific representatives from those groups are on the steering committee, or, as Jeff said, they're part of a friends group. I think that's important, just making sure, and also that we have consideration of equity in how we're building the steering committee. Those are the two things that I'd add there.
What type of commitment do they have to make? Weekly, monthly? I guess that's pretty important.
It's typically monthly meetings of master plan committees. I think that when they try to meet much more frequently than that, it just becomes kind of unproductive for them. And also, I think even if you have folks on the committee who are sort of at-large or perhaps not committed to some kind of existing local government job, when they're members of existing boards and committees, they've got other commitments, and so at some point, it's just too many meetings. So, you know, it just seems to be a good pace for a master plan committee to kind of be, to meet on a monthly basis. You can sort of accomplish enough between meetings that their time is not wasted.
Yeah. The other thing I will add is we'll, of course, ask the steering committee for review, review of draft reports, and also attendance and help facilitation or leading some portion of the public meetings. Might be facilitating a table or helping out, so we'll ask for some support in the public meeting forums when we have those.
Thank you.
So for me, as part of the planning process, you have a generalized idea of where you want to be at the end of all of this, even prior to starting any due diligence efforts. When you're benchmarking or looking for metrics to get to that point, are there other towns that you're envisioning? Is there a so-called perfect master plan for different stages of a town's life that you're looking at? Like, what's your approach with that?
Well, I think that we need to start the process with just reviewing the 2007 plan and getting a baseline for where the town, how the town has grown since then and the changes that have occurred. And then there will be, there are best practices that we can employ that will allow us to, that will, you know, guide us in what to, how to set expectations and those kinds of things. Bill, do you want to add anything to that, or?
Yeah, I guess what I would say is I don't know that we would look to a particular town as having the perfect master plan, because all towns have their own challenges and their own issues. I guess, based on our experience, we might look at pieces of other master plans. You know, we're working with Walpole, and I'm not saying that Walpole has the perfect plan, but since they're in a budding community, they may have pieces that are relevant. I think the other piece is, you know, some of the knowledge that we have on the housing side by working with the ZBA on the 40B projects that have come along over the last five or six years, and working with the planning board on the fire station project, getting an idea of where you're headed on some of the public facilities. And even the stormwater work and the ADA work, having an idea of where maybe the gaps are in your pedestrian network and where you want to focus on that, and where you want to focus some of your transportation ideas, you know, and again, building off what you've already developed as part of the Complete Streets package. So again, I don't think we would sort of prejudice the process and start with another town, but I think we would try to pick the best and maybe most appropriate pieces from other work that we've done as sort of a starting point. And like Jack said, you know, the 2007 master plan will kind of form that baseline as well.
So with, go ahead.
Sorry. Yeah, I was going to say, yeah, there's no perfect master plan, or I haven't seen one yet. We're still trying, but...
Not yet, until yours is done.
Awesome.
Like, the first thing, like Jack said, inventory is to listen. You know, it's your plan, right? We have to understand the issues, opportunities, constraints. But our job is to help you get where you want to go. So here's where we are. Jack showed that slide. How do we get there? So that's where we can show examples from other communities. You know, this is the way they did it here. Maybe this will work for you. Maybe, maybe it's not. Maybe it's not the right way to go. We can provide those best practices. And then the other thing is implementation, really. So when Jack said we think about that at the outset, that's what's going to make this plan a success, that it's implementable, and you have the capacity as a town to make, to implement these actions. So that's, that's really, you know, what's going to be a success, if this plan. If we do the plan, it sits on the shelf, and you don't do anything for 10 years, that's not going to benefit the town. But if we can start thinking about implementation and identifying how to get there right from the outset, like Jack said, early action items, sometimes we call them low-hanging fruit.
Right.
Because we bring the groups together, and we find out, yeah, we can actually get some of these things done, because maybe the folks weren't talking together before, and it shows credibility for the process. People see, wow, they actually got some early action items done, and so that's a great start to the process. So I think all those things are important.
I also think when we look back at the previous plan, you know, the usual question we ask is, so how much of that last plan actually was done? And that helps you kind of think, understand perhaps the implementation capacity of the community, what things worked, what things didn't work, what things are still germane that you would want to keep in your new plan. But I think another important question to ask when you look back at a previous plan is, so what came up in the interim that the previous plan did not anticipate? And to what extent did the thinking behind the previous plan help you navigate something that you weren't expecting to? help you navigate something that you weren't expecting to encounter? Because I really think, in a lot of ways, that is the long-term value of a master plan. It's not only that you can sort of see into the future and where we want to go and pizzazz, that's how we're going to get there. It's what happens when something comes up that you weren't expecting? And how does the plan help you get through those unexpected things? You know, when COVID hit and we were all of a sudden faced with something that nobody's master plan anticipated? How did we get through those unexpected things? I think that's really the policy value of a master plan.
So I want to thank you for answering my next question. As part of that gap analysis of reviewing that 2007 plan, is there a readout that occurs where we'll kind of learn what the deltas were between where we wanted to be and where we were? And, you know, that explanation will be provided?
Yes. Well, I think that once we have a look at the elements of the plan and we start to build out that implementation matrix, I think that, you know, those things will start to, the picture will start to form and the gap should appear in that picture.
Got it. And then Jeffrey, on the topic of implementation, are we getting stepping stones to where we want to be? Or are we just being provided with that final vision at the end of this?
Yeah, so we're going to work together with you. It's not, you won't just see it. But we'll work together with the committee. And it's not just the, you know, what the action item is, but it's who's responsible for it? You know, what group? Do they have the capacity? Funding? Do they have the funding? We'll identify other funding sources outside of the town for grants and so forth. Timeframe, whether it's short, medium, or long-term, or early action item. How difficult it is? You know, there are easier things to do and some things are longer term and maybe more difficult. But those go into the implementation matrix. That makes it easier for your group to track. And as you go on, the towns that we see being more successful have an implementation committee that carries on beyond the master planning process. Some communities, you know, have a very successful committee that's gone on for several years. And that's usually what it takes until you're ready to update your master plan.
Got it. Thank you. Eric?
I was going to ask if there were any, you were talking about the low-hanging fruit. Is there any glaring things that are either omitted or missing in the current master plan that need to be addressed that, you know, day one, you know, can bring up there? Should be attacked.
I'm not sure. I can't really answer that right now. But there are things, since you did your last master plan, or elements like sustainability and resiliency that have become more important in all master planning. So when you did your last master plan, 2007, you probably touched on it. But there's a lot of programs and opportunities now, you know, to strengthen that type of element that weren't there in 2007. You know, the report itself, reports now have become more graphic friendly, easier to read, I'll say. So all the reports were fine, but, you know, a lot of people don't want to wade through 150 pages of text. So we do try to make the report readable and put any technical information in the appendix. But as far as what's missing, I don't know if I'm prepared to answer that right now.
So how long does this whole plan take? And are there steps, interim steps, that we should be reaching goals just to go on rather than having just one section linger on forever, so to speak? So we would anticipate having a master plan a year from now? Year and a half? I don't know.
Depending on how your phasing goes, we can definitely do the master plan in a year, if, you know, without interruptions. It depends on your ability to, you know, review, you know, drafts and work with us.
That's what I'm saying. Are we going to have interim timetable, timelines to have each task done to move on? So it's not just helter-skelter?
Right. So that one of the first tasks with Jack and us will be identify that schedule of interim deliverables and tasks. And some of the big ones are the public meetings, when those meetings occur and what we'll address, you know, at those meetings. And there's different techniques and outreach and really a public participation plan of what elements that we want to include in that plan for outreach.
So obviously, master plans have to get accepted by the community, voted on. You're not going to please everyone all the time. I'm sure there's been some detractors that have called out particular areas of a master plan that you've presented. Would you care to, you know, tell us one or two of those criticisms?
Well, I think a lot of times when that situation arises, maybe due to a lacking of public engagement or the type of public engagement that was used was maybe one-dimensional and didn't reach the variety of groups of people so that some people felt left out of the process. And I think in this, with this, with our approach, we'll work with the town. We'll try to develop, like Jeff said, a public engagement strategy that is customized to the needs of the town and so we can reach as many people as possible to minimize the potential for that kind of conflict. So that when it does come to vote, people will have all the information they need to make a decision. I think that's probably the best way to avoid those situations.
Makes sense. Considering that you're working with Walpole and we share a border with Walpole, do you see any immediate synergies between what they're doing and what we might be able to do specifically around those areas where we are bordered with them?
That's a great question. I think Jeff's more familiar with the town of Walpole and maybe can address that. Can you think of any?
Yeah, I'll get Judy on after me to follow up. You know, we have the train stations. There might be some opportunities for, you know, if we want to do transit-oriented development, train stations. Housing is always an issue, you know, in every community. Activation of downtowns and people want to walk, eat, socialize in downtowns. That's one of the hot topics in almost every master plan we do. And there is funding mechanisms, you know, for that through a DHCD and other agencies. So Judy, what else can you think of that might be relate from Walpole?
Walpole, you know, Walpole is struggling to figure out who they are. They're going through tremendous demographic change, perhaps differently from, so I think some of what may be happening in your community. I think Walpole has historically been the sort of more affordable community in your region or at least has had that sense of itself, and it's not so affordable anymore. Part of what's happening there is that a lot of folks who are moving into Walpole are in, just have different economic position than the folks who've lived in Walpole their whole lives. So there's flash tension, frankly, going on in Walpole that manifests itself in things like big disagreements about housing. What's going to happen with the prison property is a big, needs to be a big conversation piece in that community. So, you know, off the top of my head, I'm not thinking about something directly connected with you. I'm just thinking about what's happening in that community. There really has been a great struggle for them as to even just the conversation around who do we want to be? Well, when you talk to folks who are longtime Walpole people, their sense of kind of who they want to be is not the same as the folks who've moved into the community more recently. And yet, for all that tension, I think one of the things I can say for Walpole that's quite different from almost any town I've worked in is the attention that community has given to the quality of its public facilities. It's been almost unprecedented how much they've done there in a fairly short period of time to improve their public buildings. So I don't think I've answered your question directly, but you ask a question. I happen to love that town. I mean, we've been there for a year. There's a lot of struggles going on there that frankly, I think if we asked them, how do you think about the towns around your periphery? They'd probably say, all those towns don't have the problems that we have. So that's kind of where they are right now.
You know, when I look at the two towns and I see five- and six-story apartment buildings built on the sidewalk and to find out that that wasn't a 40B project, that was their regular zoning?
That's correct.
I don't see us having many similarities with Walpole. And I think when you put into a small town with one main street through it, 6, 7, 800 apartment units with no parking, I think you're sort of asking for trouble. So when you look at commonalities, I think the people in this town would be horrified if we had 10% of the units in our town that they have in Walpole. So you're welcome to look, but I don't see a lot of commonalities between the two towns.
And I'm not suggesting there is. And frankly, what you're referring to is one of the things that's a great debate in Walpole right now was the wisdom of that zoning. So believe me, you know, there's a lot of disagreement about it there. It's a lovely community, but they're going through tremendous demographic change in that town.
I would say the one commonality that we have some experience with is the Metta Common Greenway.
Yeah.
Because that connects to Walpole. How does that end in Norfolk and continue on in Walpole? And where does it go to? So at least on the recreation side, I think there's some commonality. But I agree, John. We've certainly heard in the ZBA meetings that we've heard, had about density and number of units.
And they got not one affordable unit out of the hundreds of apartments.
Wow.
Striking.
I can add just one thing to this question. You asked about synergies. You know, in any master planning process where we get into our existing conditions research, there's a subset of our findings that will be regional. They will be watershed-based. They will be regional transit-based or transportation system-based. All of those things. You know, Jeff hit on this with the train stations. But that's a synergy. That's stuff that we are freshly ingrained with and freshly have been learned about this region that will add value to this process.
Yeah, I think you've hit on a lot of the things that I know I'm concerned about and I'm sure a lot of the other board members are as well as, you know, and I've heard from the community, is the downtown. I forget which one you said, but a walking downtown. That is one of the goals, I know, of the community, but it's not a goal of all the members of the community. I mean, we do have some divides here. We have some people in this community that are, they, I won't say they're anti-growth, but they're more, this is a sleepy farm town. We want to keep it that way. Well, growth is coming whether we want it or not. Growth is coming. We do have a train line here. It's a growing town. So my philosophy's always been, let's try and manage that growth and prepare for it. And so, you know, you talked about the walking downtown. That is definitely a goal of ours here on the board as we want that as well. We have a huge 40B problem. We had a meeting, I think it was a month or two ago, with the housing production. And I forget how many units we have. I mean, we're short by a lot. We're a lot. So we have our work cut out for us. So I'm not sure. I don't have a question in there. I'm just stating some, I'm just stating some facts that we have our work cut out for us, which really means you have your work cut out for you in developing this master plan.
I'll share one of our experiences because I think it touches on maybe a lot of these. And Judy may remember this. I won't say the town in New Hampshire, but they were a growing community near the Massachusetts border. And the item that split the town was sidewalks. So they were, half the town thought they were rural and we don't need sidewalks because sidewalks means urban. And the other half of the town was, well, we need sidewalks because kids, we want kids to walk to school and become more of an active community. That one issue was like the dividing line in the town. So we ended up with places, we said, well, we don't have to have, there's a rural part of town and that's fine, but the side that's developing, we can plan for sidewalks and keep the part that's rural. So, but that was an issue that, you know, people were either for or against it. You know, so we weren't going to get consensus on it. There's no way that was going to happen. But that was one of the key challenges, you know, we had a, and we did, and we worked through it. But that was kind of black and white. That was one of the main issues there.
I think that comes to probably my next question, which is that you mentioned that you are, I believe you worded it as, public engagement experts. And that's obviously a really good example where you had to work through that. And I'm sure we would have a lot of those examples as well. What kinds of examples, best practices? Or what did you do in that case? You know, how do you work, how have you worked through these issues in the past that have made you experts in public engagement?
Well, I mean, I think in the case of the sidewalks, sometimes it's an education thing where, you know, if somebody's grown up in an environment where they're not familiar with something and they don't know the benefits of it, as Jeff described, maybe being able to workshop how the sidewalks would benefit, you know, downtown businesses, how it would, you know, provide a place for, you know, kids and moms with strollers to be able to get out and get some exercise in a safe way. Talk about, you know, crash data and safety and those kinds of issues. And use data to back up how you're describing it so that people can relate to it.
And educate them.
And educate them. I think it's, I mean, not in a lecturing sort of way, but it's just in a exposure sort of way. This is a different thing that you're used to and it works here. We'll give examples of other places that have maybe similar backgrounds. And make that as a basis to start the conversation and allow them to then give their feedback and their concerns and have it be a reciprocal thing.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I was going to say, we've got like a kind of a big toolbox and you're not going to use everything. But a lot of, it's how to reach some of those populations, maybe seniors. Or we like working with the schools a lot, getting the schoolchildren involved. Even at public meetings, it's hard for people to come. You know, we may provide, someone could be a babysitter or daycare like at public meetings. So, but getting high school students involved, getting their perspective because it's their future, right? We need their opinions. We do a lot of pop-ups, Jack. We go in front of, it could be a supermarket, it could be a library, it could be post office, you know, asking certain questions at different times. That is a way to get people that may not, you know, come to meetings. Of course, surveys, you know, website input. There's just a lot of different techniques that we use in addition to the, the public meetings are the kind of the big items, the big flashy items. But not everyone goes or can't go to the public meeting. So it's identifying how, which are those hard-to-reach populations or neighborhoods in the community? Could be a church because it could be, you know, assisted living facility. So there's a lot of different ways to do that and reach out to those folks. So if we have a, we'll, and we'll work with you and talk about the plan and how we're going to do that. But, you know, through that plan, we'll end up with very good input and feedback throughout the process. And, you know, ask for that feedback all throughout the process. We always ask every meeting. There's always someone that comes to the last meeting and says. But usually by that point, we've pretty much nailed down, you know, most of the strategies and actions and recommendations at that point.
It seems to me that to do this right is going to be a real chore. First of all, the gathering of the information, right? Across sections of information from all different groups is one thing. I think your virtual board, 24-hour input board, I think that's awesome, right? We have 50 people at your up-the-town meeting out of 10,000. But people at night that can put in their comments, I think that's super. I think that'll get a good response. But you get the data and all these varying opinions. Now you've got to put that together, prioritize it. And then I would guess you'd have to come to consensus come to consensus and compromise on some of the aspects in one area, just so that it passes a town meeting. So there's going to be a lot of the gathering, I guess, is step number one important. But then to evaluate it, put it together, what to bring forward and how, is probably going to be, and who does that? The planning board, the steering committee, with your help, or?
Well, we will certainly help, and I think with modern data tools and surveying tools, we'll be able to get a pretty accurate picture of where the comments are coming from, and what, you know, what the consensus is in certain areas, so that we can then reflect it back and confirm it, to make sure that we're hearing it correctly, and then go from there. So I think, Emily, do you have any, anything insight into that, using data and?
Yeah, I mean, not so much on the data point. We'll gather data, we'll use the data. That's, you know, bread and butter, sort of first line of attack. But it's, what we're talking about with public engagement is meeting people where they're at to get their feedback. And your question about, I mean, it's very spot-on. It is, it's a huge lift, but it's sort of a dance that we do as the consultants with your community. You know, we listen to them, we absorb all of that, we put it then, back to them in different words, in fewer words, and say, this is where we found commonalities, this is where we're seeing some friction, and this is what you've told us that you think that the town could do to grow into the town you want it to be. So did we get that right? Did we not? People who didn't chime in the first time around are going to chime in then, you know, it's sort of this back and forth for a bit. And then we also are going to interject our professional perspectives on what other towns with this same issue or concern or need have addressed it this way. So that's where we start peppering in some information that starts to get people thinking differently about these problems. And maybe a problem becomes an opportunity to do something with that downtown that they could get excited about, or, you know, make a change to their street or their neighborhood that they hadn't thought about before, but maybe it would solve another need in the town. So, you know, we are always going to get that person at the last meeting that says, well, you know, I never signed up for this, or I don't think that's the way you should do it. And at the end of the day, you can't please everyone, but you can show through having done a thorough process and having really done your due diligence as a steering group and for us as your consultants, to have thought deeply about all of the different representation that we bring to the process. So that's really the best I can say about it. It is a sticky process, and it's never the same in any community. And Judy, you know, is better to tell you about that than anyone, but that's been my experience.
Thank you.
No, I agree, Emily. And I also think too, you know, although through the planning process, a lot of issues of tension kind of can be resolved, there may be things at the, sort of came toward the end of the planning process that are not resolved. And sometimes what the community has to sort of do is agree that that, something's going to be parked, in order to allow other things to go forward. And that as part of the implementation process, there's additional work that needs to be done on some topic that within the timeframe of the master plan simply did not get resolved, but you've gotten somewhere with it. At least, maybe you've been able to shed more light on kind of what's underneath some of the disagreements that people are having. And so you can kind of lay out a, almost like a conflict resolution process in the implementation program. Ideally, of course, everything gets worked out, but sometimes it doesn't. And I think people probably ought to know that, that you go as far as you can with everything that you can. Sometimes it just takes longer on a few key topics, and you try to limit what those are.
And sometimes both sides dig in, and there is never compromise.
Mm-hmm.
And like I said, to me, that's the issue of the whole thing. And the part is, you really have to try to get the majority on board, or you fail a town meeting. Because even if this thing passes, a lot of the stuff, like the sidewalks, the downtown, we have an inside center of town with no major highway, we have no infrastructure. We have gone through a process to try to change that, but funding normally is a big problem too. So basically, on this task here, I just think it's a huge thing when everything is gathered the information, what you do with that. And that's where I would be looking for help, because I think some people will be entrenched in and will not want to change their mind on certain issues that they really feel strongly about. So anyways, it's nice to get started finally, but we'll see what happens.
I have a question. In terms of the, the way the RFP was structured, there was the opportunity to seat a master plan steering committee as part of the process, not seat it right away. The question is a variation of that, in terms of, have you experienced a community which has essentially taken the planning board as the body and added to it people to create a master plan steering committee with both, as opposed to just a steering committee, which might be a cross-section of the community, and maybe a few members of the planning board?
So when I worked with Groton, the Groton Planning Board really wanted to oversee their master plan process. And there was a particular reason for that. The town had recently created a sustainability commission, and the sustainability commission wanted to run the master plan. The planning board said, no, 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 no. But what the planning board also knew was that they needed to open it up beyond themselves. So the planning board was the steering committee, but they brought in other people in the community to be almost like advisors to the planning process, ambassadors to the process, working groups. But the planning board kind of did run the master plan process. But they created a lot of opportunities for the community to get involved, and it actually was a lovely process. A little different from what I've seen in a lot of towns, but it worked for them.
I'd like to hear some about sustainability and how we keep that at the forefront of the master plan. We've got a beautiful community here, a lot of natural wetlands, a lot of open spaces. How do we ensure that we preserve those and we don't affect them going forward with any new projects that we might take on?
Yeah, sure. I'm just going to jump right in and take this, Jack. So, you know, first of all, we're talking about sustainability and resilience as something that's woven throughout the entire plan in most cases. And your final table of contents can look a number of different ways, but regardless of how the chapters play out, these are themes that are carried throughout the entire plan and the entire planning process. So, you know, we start by doing what we are doing with most other elements here, and looking at the policies, the town's existing approaches to sustainability and climate resilience through how you're currently regulating growth, through things like subdivision regulations and parts of your zoning bylaw, and your floodplain protection district, and things like this. I know that you've updated some of these things recently, and it seems like you guys are already thinking about these things. So you're in a good place to start this master planning process. We'd be looking at what you've done, what sort of recommendations were in the 2007 plan related to sustainability, and how you've done with implementing those, what sort of barriers you've faced, pushback, if you will. And what sort of capacity do you have to push further? So there's a lot of bringing new ideas to the table with the underlying context of the work that you've already done. So we need to look very closely at your open space and recreation plan. There's a lot of climate resilience and sustainability elements that go into those plans. Obviously, your MVP process is a huge sort of directional marker for where we go with the comprehensive plan, because that's sort of a quick and dirty process, but there are a lot of good ideas that come out of it. And sometimes a comprehensive plan helps you institutionalize the, sort of, the drivers of the MVP actions. And really, it's what else can we do during this process, and this is just something Judy said, to build sustainability and climate resilience, build capacity through this process, to help you then implement the measures that are coming out of the implementation plan that have to do with climate change resilience, and have to do with every other element. But how do you do that in a way that's sustainable for the long term? Sustainability is, obviously, it's a big word, and it can mean a lot of things. We could be talking about energy security, we could be talking about greenhouse gas reduction, we could be talking about economic and financial sustainability, long-term health of your community. So I'm using the word in all of those meanings right now. Yeah, I could go on. Anyone want to add here? Please do.
So when you're talking about sustainability and like, you know, climate, I guess, just being mindful and being a good steward of the climate, we were recently on a meeting, I was in a meeting last week, where they were evaluating a boiler, whether to buy a boiler for a building, it was a municipal building, or look at some sort of a high-efficiency heating system. And so will this master plan go into the municipal buildings as far as looking at our municipal buildings and helping us, guide us towards the future on sustainability and energy efficiency of our municipal buildings?
Yes, it probably won't get to the detail of whether, you know, what to do in that circumstance of the boiler or otherwise, but what it should do is guide policy.
Okay. That's exactly what I'm, yeah.
So if you're not already doing this through your green communities program, we would look at that green communities program and look at the energy committee and say, what's coming out of that right now?
Right.
And a question like you just brought up is a really useful tool for us as planners, for you to bring to us and say, so, like, again, Judy mentioned this earlier, what sort of questions have come up?
Yeah, so the meeting I was in, there seemed to be a conversation between two different parties at the meeting, and it-
That we are thinking about, how can we help you develop a policy that helps answer those questions in the future? So it's not just about what to do with this one building and this one piece of HVAC infrastructure. It's, we know going forward that we're going to focus on these types of improvements in these facilities. And maybe these facilities we aren't because they're going to be sunsetted.
Right.
You know, maybe we're, that one's not going to be with us for another 15 years, and so we're not going to put our energy efficiency dollars or renewable dollars there.
Yeah, so what I understand, it's about providing the guidance on how to move forward, because what, the meeting I was in, there was, seemed to be two different parties discussing, and they just, they didn't seem in alignment at all. And we were like, well, this is, that was my key takeaway in the meeting, was they were misaligned, and I didn't know who from the, I didn't know which group was actually aligned with the town. So I was like, I don't even know if they understand what the goals are of the town, and if we're all in alignment.
They do.
And so, so anyway, that's something that I think would be key to look forward to. And I was just curious if part of the master plan would include that goal-setting for our municipal buildings as well?
Yeah, absolutely. And honestly, the mark of, going back to a previous question, the mark of a successful comprehensive plan is that it is something that those types of committee meetings refer to actively, routinely. You know, when that question comes up, someone will say, well, let's look what it says in our comp plan. And when that is what happens, that's a successful comprehensive plan.
Okay, so I guess my follow-up then to that is, so we developed this master plan, we get it approved, how do we, I guess, present, or, I'm not sure what the proper word is here, but to, how do we distribute that to the other boards, so that they are aware, these are our goals, and this is what, I guess, for lack of a-
The alignment across the municipality.
Yeah, how is it? Yeah.
Well, the implementation plan, that's-
Okay, so that's that implementation committee that you talked about, you recommended that might be a-
Yeah, but the plan will come out of this document, the master plan.
Okay.
So you'll have a plan that shows the goals, the actions, strategies, policies, responsibility, the cost, and timeframe.
Okay.
And that's what you're going to share with.
Yeah, because, I mean, like I said, I was in this meeting, and I was like, I think the goals are misaligned to the town, and I don't know if they even understand what the town's goals are. It's kind of like having a company that doesn't have a mission statement or a vision, or maybe they have it, but nobody knows about it. And so I want to be, once, it seems like this master plan is going to be our vision and mission statement for the town, and give us the guidelines to follow. And so you're thinking that that implementation committee would be the tool to use to make sure that we align all the boards?
There are lots of things that you can do, though, in addition to having a committee. I mean, one of the things I've seen in communities is when the planning board and the select board are working closely together, that when the select board has their annual goal-setting process, or when the town administrator does, or whoever is leading the annual goal-setting process, because every community seems to be doing that now, you know, to challenge town departments and boards and committees who are participating in that process, to say, what are we going to do this year to help implement something in the comprehensive plan? And that that's part of the selectmen's goals, or sort of, one of their goals is working, continuing to work on the master plan. So now there's this sort of basically direction to town departments for everybody to be thinking about, well, what chunk of the master plan can they be working on this year? And it just helps to bring everybody into the fold of kind of recognizing that they all have something, a responsibility, but also a role to play. And I think sometimes that message coming from the select board can be very important. So, you know, work for the wise, planning board, master plan committee, people need to be working closely with other policy boards on this project.
Okay.
But that has been a very successful thing, of just getting the select board's annual goal-setting process to be, to include something about comprehensive plan implementation.
Gotcha.
That's expanded out across all the town departments.
I've got one last question, but I did want to do a time check.
Yeah, we are. We're at our time, and I want to be respectful to the next party.
So my last question's really quick, just from Beta Group, I'm curious on your perspective of what this planning board should look at with regards to these two RFP responses that we have, and what do you think would be a differentiating factor that would make Beta Group?
Well, I think we've demonstrated tonight that we have a broad set of experiences that not only include our individual experiences with towns throughout New England, but also as a team, and working together to work out some of these questions that you have at this stage, so that we can, you know, come up with good outcomes for the master plan and guide it along in a way that is in the best interest of the town. Anything else?
I'd just add real quick that, you know, we have experience locally in Norfolk, we have experience regionally, but I think the other thing we bring to the table is our experience sort of outside the region in other New England towns. Again, every town is different, but towns do have similarities, so I think we have a lot of experience to draw around in that respect. So I think sort of the breadth of our experience is really something that I think would benefit the town and the board.
I'll just add, you'd be working with us for a while, so we're pretty easy to work with as a group. We like working with each other, we've done this for a long time, so that's, I think that's important, to get the work done, so.
Thanks, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Yep.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, everyone. Have a great night.
Bye.
Rich, any cups in there?
Doors.
Richard, mommy cups. So is everybody, Josh, y'all set up? We're still muted, I think, but-
I'm always cold.
Okay, so welcome back, everyone, this is part two of tonight's meeting, we have our second interview, it is with the MAPC, and we have Josh Fiella, and I will pass it over to him, let him do the introductions for his team. You know, I think you do know all of us here, we got, I'll just go real quick, we have Richard McCarthy, our town planner, John Waddleton, myself, Chad Peck, Chris Mapford, Eric Diamond, Melissa Mayo, and Gary Sullivan is not with us tonight, he's out of town, and I'll let you go from there.
Great, thank you Chad, thank you board, chair, thank you Norfolk for having us here and considering us for the master plan, we're pleased to be here and pleased to be considered for this project, so thank you for having us. I'm Josh Fiella, a principal planner at MAPC, as you all mentioned, I'm joined by two of my colleagues, who'll let introduce themselves, Andrea and Gloria.
Yeah, hi, everyone, I'm Andrea Harris Long, and I'm a senior planner at MAPC with our land use team, I've been there about a year, doing a little bit of everything from land use to zoning, so it's nice to meet you all.
Hi, everybody, my name's Gloria Hongpu, I am a community engagement specialist at MAPC, so I work across a bunch of projects focusing on that engagement component, and have been at MAPC for, depending on how you count it, about a year.
So, as requested, we have a 15-minute or so presentation.
Yes.
And we are prepared for intense 45 minutes of questioning.
Nonstop.
We're ready for that.
We'll start the timer now.
We can have the discussion with you all, but so the discussion of our presentation, we have a few items which hopefully highlight also requested, supplement the proposal, but don't duplicate the proposal, and hopefully give you a little more insight into our team and the way that we work together. So a little bit more about us, and a background about our team. So one of the things I love about working at MAPC and working on master plans specifically is our staff, and the way that we can arrange a team within our staff at the agency, so we have over 100 planners and professionals on our staff, within that, we have the full complement of experts and specialists to cover the full breadth of a master plan, and I think that's one of the real benefits, having worked previously in life as a planning consultant at a smaller firm, not having to team with outside firms or other agencies, but to be able to bring all of the staff needed for an assignment like this from in-house, with people that we work with regularly on various assignments, and have that all within the same office, I think is a real benefit for master plans in terms of having that integrated and coordinated approach. We have selected, I'm really excited about the team that you see here, all the little faces, really fantastic to have, I think, internal availability work out such that we have really some fantastic team members that would be working with you and the town on this master plan assignment, in many familiar faces potentially, so Adrienne Boynton is working with the town of Norfolk presently on the hazard mitigation planning, Barry Keppard recently worked with the town on a shared services provision for public health, so that was a good assignment, Brian Luther is your subregional coordinator, working with the swap subregion, the Southwest Area Planning Council, which is a part of MAPC's organization of the region, so Rich would be a member of that and sit on it, so Brian is the coordinator of that group. I, myself, am working with you all on the Southwood property study, and recently worked with you all on the B1 zoning effort as well. So we have a team which is really familiar with working with each other, as we're all internal MAPC staff, and we have a strong familiarity with the town as well. One of the other benefits of MAPC is our region and the fact that we only work within our region, I think is a really strong suit for communities like Norfolk, so we are working with similarly scaled, similarly positioned communities throughout the region, and can think about things that have worked in those other places, best practices, the types of communities that Norfolk might find as maybe having a certain aspect of another community which is aspirational, you might want to look to, there's a very good chance that we've worked with that community to help them in that way, and can bring some of that knowledge to bear on our activities here. So it's good to be a part of the region and to support our communities in this way, and we try to bring those lessons learned across the work, including work that we've done on master plans in other communities, so we've done quite a few, you see a sampling of those master plans recently completed in some of the other communities in the region, and it's always interesting, one of the things that we try to do as we work on each planning process is build upon the successes with each community, think about what worked well, what didn't work well, and try to refine it and make it better. So I like to think that with each successive master plan, we were actually getting better and better as a team, not that any of these were bad efforts, but they, I think, build upon each other, and you just get stronger with each one. So the other thing you might notice is that each master plan effort has a little bit of a different look and feel, a little bit of a different brand, so that's something that we develop with the community, try to make that something that's identifiable to the residents of the neighborhoods and residents of the town at large, and think of ways that the community can identify with the planning process, and make it a little more accessible, a little more eye-catching, grab people's attention. One of the other benefits, I think that's unique because of a recent effort that we did through region-wide planning efforts, so we updated the regional plan, Metro Common 2050, recently, as a part of that effort, one of the foundational research efforts that I was actually charged with was looking at recent master plans that had been completed since 2008 in the region, and basically cataloging the recommendations from those plans, and looking at them as things that should be integrated with the regional plan, but also thinking about them as a field of best practice research. So we have that research available to us, and lean on it occasionally for a specific ask that might come up in a master plan, like, you know, a facade improvement program, what's worked well, what hasn't worked well, how have other communities done it, so we have this resource which is ready-made to do that. These were the 42 plans that we did actually take a look at, plans that were completed since 2008, which is when the previous regional plan was completed, so we looked at planning processes which had occurred since that time, and it's all cataloged in a very complex spreadsheet that's searchable and insertable by any different way you want to take a look at it, by community type, by size of community, where the communities are located, the types of, the size of population, et cetera. So that's a fantastic resource that we can leverage in this work. But enough about sort of us and the region, a little bit more about Norfolk, of course, you've done your own planning processes, this isn't, we're not inventing the wheel here, we understand that in master plan processes, this is a larger coordinated planning effort which sits atop everything else that you've been doing recently, the housing production plan, the most recent of those townwide planning efforts, and then also looking back to the open space and recreation plan, complete streets prioritization plan, the townwide economic development plan, which MAPC authored, and really taking a look at all of these plans, the synergies between them, building upon them, and thinking about the ways that they can be prioritized, how they can be made actionable, and given the emphasis that's needed with this master plan process. So we're building upon all this work, we're not trying to replace it, and we're trying to organize the town's efforts so that you're really leveraging all this great work which you've already done, and bringing it into the present in a coordinated fashion. And we know from our involvement in a lot of the work, the town very well, of course, we know a lot of the issues that the town has been dealing with recently, know about the efforts around town center, and zoning around town center, thinking about how town center relates to the more recently adopted or requirements of the Section 3A MBTA Housing Act, how town center will react with that, thinking about the Southwood property, but of course, not just thinking about the town in terms of the changes that will occur, but also thinking about the town in terms of the preservation that is occurring, the conservation areas that are important to the quality of life of the town, the recreation and open space areas, and how those relate and interact with the development which the town has seen, and how to keep all of those pieces in place. We're also very familiar with the town's zoning bylaw, and I think that's a real benefit to thinking about implementation of the master plan, having strategies which are ready to go and move forward to the next steps. Many times, those are pointing towards the zoning bylaw as one of the instruments of implementation, so being immediately familiar with the zoning bylaw of the town, I think is a real benefit, and something that we can pick up from our past and recent work. But one of the things to say, though, is that a town isn't all the charts, figures, past plans, maps and graphs, but it's also what's on the ground, the places, the people. This wonderful footage is courtesy of your cable television crew, and drone footage that they provided over the town center, but this is the kind of thing, I think, that sometimes it's easy to lose track of in a planning process, that we're actually thinking about the real places that people identify with, we're trying to come up with ideas that will improve people's quality of life in real life, not just in a planning document, and so we always make it a point to try to get to know the communities really well in this regard, and not just in regard to the data, the maps, and the other pieces of information which you would expect from us. But it's always, I think mesmerizing to see drone footage flown over the town, and I think this is the kind of thing that we need to remind ourselves, is the really important part of a process like this, and what people connect to, and they don't necessarily connect to planners and the plans that we write, but we want to make sure that what we're writing and providing as an approach to making the town better is accessible to people, is dare I say, exciting to people, both in terms of how they engage with our process and how they engage with the plan documents. So I think that it's really important to re-center ourselves occasionally, and to look at the town from the perspective of the fabulous NCTV footage. Let me see if I can get past this.
Escape.
So how do we put all this together? The master plan content can feel a little bit overwhelming at times, it is comprehensive, there's a lot of moving parts and pieces, and a lot of topics that we're covering in the plan. A vision statement sits atop all of that content, we're contemplating in our approach- We're contemplating in our approach nine topic areas which would be detailed through goals and strategies and which would add actionable items to that vision statement and move it forward. And then all wrapped into an actionable implementation plan which would help move this document from a plan into its next life and iteration with the town. So a different way to think about all this content, we'd like to posit in a more simple three-step diagram. So how we see the plan, really the first step and the foundation is highlighting issues. So coming up with, through the data analysis, through community meetings, engagement with the past plans, really highlighting the issues that the town is facing, what needs to be solved, what is the town looking at over the next 10 years, which is the time horizon of the master plan. And defining those issues in a very concrete way as a problem to be solved that is from the community, confirmed with the community and in a way that's accessible to the community. And from there, that first step is critically important to frame it that way because then we're really thinking about connecting solutions to those problems which have been identified through hopefully some form of consensus and shared ideas with the community, that there's a coalescing around the types of problems that are to be solved. And then an exploration with the community of the types of solutions that they would find most palatable, most achievable and most desirable. So looking through that is the second step. And then distilling, once we define what those most palatable solutions are, a roadmap to those solutions through the planning document and through the implementation plan. It's critical to point out that particularly in that second step, identifying solutions, there's many rabbit holes that could be gone down in a master plan process, a lot of details that we might want to figure out or have emerged through this process. But that's oftentimes the difficulty is we need to keep ourselves at the master plan level. We're not trying to solve all the problems through this plan process. We're trying to identify the solutions. So that's why we think a plan, a team with planners is the appropriate type of team. You can bring in a team of engineers later and solve the problems, work out those details. But a team of planners keeps you at that higher level of identifying solutions, making a roadmap and then coming back with subsequent efforts to define those solutions with the calculations, with the details. But you don't need that. You'll get bogged down if you try to do that in a master plan process. Of course, it's not that straightforward as the simple three-part diagram shows. There's all sorts of feedback loops, recursive conversations, things that we'll learn in the second step or third step that we didn't learn at the beginning. So we make sure that we build those into the process and have a chance to come back to the community and effectively keep the master plan as an organic, growing document all the way through to the draft comment period when we have real content available. And someone says, well, wait a minute. You've got all the problems clearly defined, but you didn't define this single most important thing. And sometimes that happens and you have to reintroduce a new problem towards the end and figure that out. We try to keep the process open, but follow this logical step in the process to get us there. So I want to pass it over to Andrea and Gloria who will talk us through in a little more detail how you actually get through these three steps and then we'll go into the question and answer it.
Thanks, Josh. So whenever we were putting together the proposal, we really appreciated your RFP was really detailed and really laid out the goals for your planning process. And so whenever we were kind of thinking through the project and the process internally of how we could see this work happening, we looked at this kind of three-step model and then had some general like guiding principles and different ways to think of our approach that hopefully align with the goals that you have for this process. So the first, as Josh mentioned, we have a really big team, a really talented team of different subject matter experts, a really interdisciplinary team that can help carry forward this plan and make sure that, you know, it's not just being done by two or three people, but that we're really leveraging the different skills and the experiences that we have at MAPC. The other thing that we're bringing to this is MAPC is really a data-driven agency where a data repository in a lot of ways. We have a really robust data synthesis team. And, you know, they are a clearinghouse of data for a lot of planning processes. Even if you don't go with MAPC, you probably will use MAPC data in your master plan because consultants often come to us for their data needs. This slide kind of shows kind of what we do with data, that we use both quantitative and qualitative data in our process. This slide is obviously showing more of the quantitative side. We'll build on the efforts like Josh said of what you've already done. You've recently done a housing production plan. So we'll not reinvent the wheel. We'll use the data that's there and try to augment it where we can with more recent data. This graph on the right is, or on the left, we have Warren Group data to get like more accurate sales data. So we can see where our data sources can augment the work that you've already done. We'll also look at, you know, the basic demographics information to not just understand who's in the town, but to leverage that in our community engagement processes. And Gloria will talk about that in a minute. We also, where we can, will look at the data both holistically as the town, but then we'll see where we can start to break it out in different racial or social categories to see where there may be racial or social disparities. And then how can we incorporate that into the plan and identify strategies where necessary? So we try to not just pull the data and plug it in, but we really try to think critically about how we can use this to make the plan a little more robust. So I'll let Gloria talk a bit about communities and our planning.
Thanks, Andrea. So of course, in addition to that quantitative technical data, we're also going to want to hear the stories, experiences and vision of community members in Norfolk. And how we're going to do that, we're going to go ahead and work, of course, with the steering committee for the master plan to really understand who the community members of Norfolk are, make sure we're reaching them and make sure we're meeting them where they are in our engagement process. So whether that means sort of more typical, what you would think of as a town meeting, or a public meeting rather, to something a little bit more creative. So you can see images here of some previous public events prior to the pandemic, of course, where MAPC community engagement team members brought sort of creative engagement tactics to existing public events to again, really meet folks where they're already at. And the other thing that we really value in how we do our community engagement at MAPC is reaching folks who historically may not always have been included in planning processes because we of course want this to be a master plan that's for, but also by the community of Norfolk. And so that means perhaps reaching out to youth, to seniors, to parents with children who typically don't have time to take part in a planning process. So then, once we've identified those issues, we'll then of course turn to solutions with a similar focus on being data-driven, being community-focused and with an eye for that implementation piece towards the end. And so continuing with the community engagement component of then identifying solutions, we will want to focus on really actively and productively engaging community members beyond that issue identification into the solutions piece so that they're really bought in to what we eventually propose in the master plan and will be on board for implementing once it gets to that point down the line. And I wanted to show our process that we follow on the community engagement team for how we do that meaningful engagement and make sure folks are bought in through this dynamic process that starts with collecting that input through those creative engagement tactics, through meeting people where they are, but using really rigorous standards and guidelines as we do that. To then similarly in our analysis phase, using our qualitative research methodology that provides a process for how we analyze that input, what we hear from the community. And then finally incorporating it into the Norfolk master plan itself, but also sharing it back with the community and sort of asking, did we get this right? Did we hear what you said correctly, as Josh was mentioning previously? Now I'll turn it back to Andrea to talk the rest of the identifying solutions.
So one of the other things that I think was really important in your proposal, and we also really value this, is recognizing that Norfolk is not in a bubble, that you are impacted by your neighbors. You also, the decisions you make do impact your neighbors. And so because we are the regional planning agency and as Josh mentioned, we work with our subregions and all of the different communities. We have 101 cities and towns in our region. It's a lot that we work with. And we'll take that knowledge and work it into your process to make sure that as we are, you know, identifying those issues and then thinking about the ways that we can start thinking about solutions and strategies, you know, what kinds of strategies will make sense for Norfolk, but also make sense in the subregional context. Yes, you all are a member of the swap subregion. And then also on that regional scale of, you know, what are you doing that can be leveraged by what's happening in the greater Boston region? We think that there are three kind of big buckets of kind of regional dependencies is what we call it. The housing market, transportation network and your water and environmental resources. Those are three things that it's really important that whenever we're looking at those, that we're coming up with strategies that recognize that your housing market is not just the Norfolk housing market. You're part of a housing sub-market and the greater Boston housing market. And so how can we take that into account when we're thinking about ways to advance the local housing choices here? Same with your transportation network. Your roads don't stop at your town boundaries. So how can we make sure that we're having a really comprehensive transportation element of your master plan that takes into account what's happening in your neighboring communities? And same with water resources, things like watersheds don't know town boundaries. And so how can we make sure that when we're making environmental strategies, taking that into account? We think it's also just really good to be good neighbors and try to bring in your neighbors in the planning process so that you really are trying to work together and where you can leverage those, you know, joint planning efforts where possible. The other thing that we try to do with master plans that we found really effective and actually like Josh mentioned, making the plan accessible to the public is thinking about, it's not just a 100-page written document, but thinking about it in a spatial sense. So we know that people, they don't really care about the nitty-gritty bylaw language maybe, but they care what's happening in their neighborhood. And how can we contextualize the master plan and help explain, you know, this is going to happen in your neighborhood or this is, this recommendation is tied to your neighborhood? We thought it would be interesting to kind of think of it this way. So whenever you're doing a master plan, the recommendations end up usually kind of having priority investment recommendations. Where can you kind of put the town's money in the next 10 years to have the most bang for your buck? Where do you want to preserve your areas or make sure that you are, you know, maybe not concentrating growth in certain areas? Or what open space or natural resources do you want to preserve? Where are you having those strategic growth centers? Sort of the Southwood Hospital, I think is a good example of you're doing a very strategic master planning process for that site. So how, what other places might you need to do that and how can the master plan support that? And then lastly, in multimodal connectivity, oftentimes your master plan will have recommendations to help you encourage better transportation network and connectivity. All of these things, just on the slide, not very interesting, but whenever we can start to map it and show kind of visually where you're making those priority investments, where you're having preservation areas, where you have multimodal connectivity, like downward the Metacomic Greenway is going. I think this is where, we like to do this with master plans. It helps to, to the average resident in Norfolk, help them understand what does this plan mean? And what does it mean for where I live or the places that I live in Norfolk? How are they going to be impacted? So this is a very simple map, but through this process, we will, you know, make some, some nice kind of graphic spatial demonstrations of what the plan means so that you'll have another tool whenever you kind of go beyond the adoption and you're talking about implementing it to explain what you're doing as the planning board or other boards and committees. The other thing that was very present in your proposal, RFP, and something that we really value is sustainable growth. You all are doing a really great job. You have clearly done a lot of planning to try to grow sustainably. You've done a lot of work in concentrating your planning and investments in town center. You've done a really good job of expanding different housing options. Boyd's Crossing, I think, is a really cool example of where you have a housing development that's a little different. You don't see that a lot in the, in the region, but it's so cool. It gives a little bit different housing choice. It's, you know, environmentally really interesting. So we want to make sure that this plan is growing on what you all already are doing. We don't need to reinvent the wheel. You've done a lot of things. So I see the master plan as really taking what you've been doing and kind of fine-tuning it through this process with the community. Again, you have great mixed-use examples right in your town center. You've already done tons of investments in your town center. So the master plan, I think, is a really good opportunity to build on what you've already been doing and kind of just take it to that next level. So a master plan is great, but if you don't have a plan for doing something after the master plan is done, it's kind of worthless. So we really like to put a lot of time and effort into that roadmap, the implementation. We also know that you don't have an infinite amount of money, so it needs to be a smart implementation plan. And so we have sort of this like three-pronged approach to thinking about implementation. One of the things that we want to try with Norfolk that we haven't really done with other communities yet is this idea of context communities. That's something that is often done with housing production plans or other kind of specialized plans, but it's essentially saying Norfolk is similar to other communities in certain ways. How can we pick those communities out and find out where those similarities can actually leverage and benefit you all as you're thinking about new things to try in your town? So we know in local government, we love to look to our neighbors and look to our partners and say, what are you doing? Is that working? How can we do that better? So I think we could really do that in this plan well and incorporate case studies and give some really good examples so that whenever you're starting to do implementation, you're not starting from ground zero. We also think it's really important to continue the community engagement through implementation conversations. We also really want to make sure that we're engaging not just the public, but the town and the town staff and the town boards and committees. We have community immersion days built into the proposal. And we think that's really valuable because you all as planning board, Rich is the planning director, like you all know your resources and what you've tried in the past and what has and hasn't worked. So we want to make sure that you're, you're giving us that information to help make good implementation recommendations. And lastly, strategic prioritization, that's really key. Thinking about what can be done in the midterm, the short term, the long term, and what kinds of resources do you need? So thinking about, you know, taking that to the public, vetting that through the town systems. And two pictures up here, you all are already really good at implementation.
The microphone for you two dropped off.
Oh, sorry.
Okay.
Good.
Keep going, sorry.
I was just gonna kind of pat you all on the back and say, you guys have done some really good implementation. Your streetscape improvements, your complete streets work in town center, the community garden at the Rockwood Road Park. Those are two things that are often included in the implementation plans. We see you all are kind of doing it. So how can we continue again to just leverage your already good-minded implementation in this planning process? So I'll hand it over to Josh to close this out.
Yeah, I just wanted to close on a statement that we've walked you through our approach and sort of how to structure a complicated process and make it more simple and accessible. But to reinforce that, it's our approach, but it's your plan. So we're here to reassure you that we see ourselves as sort of, I don't know, your tool or your instrument to get the plan down on paper, but we're not writing your plan for you. We're trying to structure a process such that we will get as much as the community involved as possible, get them to tell us the right things at the right times in terms of this planning process. And then really use our experience to craft that into a very meaningful, exciting vision for the future of the town and where you had it over the next 10 years. But it's your vision. It's the town's vision. We're here to give you the support, facilitate a process and facilitate the occasions to, you know, have the occasional tough conversation to meet an issue that the town might be facing head-on, to structure within this process the ability to get ahead of some of the things that you might be seeing on the horizon 10 years from now. Or things that you might not be seeing that we can help you discern from the data and analysis that we'll also be providing for this process. So think of us as your support team, all the tools that you need to get through this. But we're not, don't be worried that the regional planning agency is going to come into your town and give you some state's plan or something. It's Norfolk's plan. And we're here to facilitate that and support you in that effort. And we're very excited to do so. So thank you all for entertaining us and having us for the interview this evening. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Who wants to start?
I'm happy to. First off, I want to say thank you for focusing on the individual people in the town, especially with a lens on diversity. Really appreciate that. You've done about 42 plans since 2008 and you're working about 101 cities you mentioned, right? How do you make sure you don't lose focus on the task at hand? You know, we're not put back on the, on the back burner or anything like that.
Yeah, yeah. So I think that's a, that's a great question. And I think the, the simple answer to that is that we're not working with all those towns at the same time, much to their chagrin. We do have to sort of balance and track our commitments in the region, make sure that we are dividing our time as a regional planning agency and our resources. So that is all tracked as we think about equity in the region and how we're serving our communities. We were happy that when this master plan came up, if, well, you have all been involved in the process. So I think it would give you some comfort actually to know that when the master plan was out previously, when the master plan was out previously, earlier in the summer, we actually didn't respond because we didn't have the capacity at that moment, and it didn't fit with the other projects. With the, the little bit of a later revamping of the proposal is a benefit to us because it actually did slot in better with our workload and we were able to carve the time out. So I don't think that's, that's an issue to be concerned about. We're kind of holding it spot in the hope that we would be a successful respondent in this case. And then there, there'll be, you know, if, if this doesn't work out between us, then we would, we would slot in, work with another community. But at the moment, we're sort of, we've got Norfolk in the position to work with the staff that we've identified.
Appreciate that. Can you expand a little bit around sustainability and the focus of sustainability when it comes to creating the master plan?
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll start us off, and then you guys are welcome to chip in too. But the sustainability is one of the sort of focuses of the agency. It's a major part of the, the regional planning effort as well. Sustainability in terms of resilience, thinking about climate change is a central feature of reality in our lives, both presently and, you know, unfortunately, probably even more, more difficulties associated with it in the future. So that's one of the ways in which we think about sustainability is thinking about, as Adria is with your hazard mitigation plan, what are the issues that the town might be facing in terms of climate, natural disaster, risk in terms of more frequent or more intense rainfall and storm events, maybe inland flooding from some of your waterways or, or water bodies? And then thinking about all of those environmental issues that the town might be facing and approaching them. That's, that's a center point of the work and the way we approach it. We have the staff to do so, the environmental planners, the experts in water resource management, all of those things. We also think about sustainability more in the direction of equity as well. So thinking about the economic development of the town, the housing of the town, the affordability of the town, the transportation systems of the town, how all of those are being approached in a sustainable way, such that the, the systems and infrastructure which the town have are meeting the needs and meeting the needs that are projected as well. And then thinking about what needs to happen in terms of investment to make sure that those are adequate as you move forward, both in terms of the roadways, the wastewater investigations that you all have been doing in town center, how those needs might, might shift or how you might want them to shift, and how the investments and how the town moves with implementation could support those desires as well. So I think those, it's a little bit of a taste of all the different ways that we approach sustainability. I don't know if there's, I'm sure there's others.
Too many.
I would just quickly add, from the community engagement perspective, we also, speaking of MAPC staff all already knowing each other, knowing how to work with each other, I'm currently working with Adria on another project where we're thinking really hard about the communications and engagement around sustainability and, and climate change and topics like that, and how to address those with the general public and get their feedback in interesting ways that are more oriented towards hope and solutions as opposed to sort of the doom and gloom that can come around these topics. So just wanted to flag that as well as one of the benefits, I think, of having this integrated team that's been thinking about these issues for a while together.
And I'll just add real quick, I think that it's important to think about sustainability, and your proposal did this, in all of the different topic areas. And that's where having this team together, we've factored into our internal planning process, work sessions, where kind of at key touchpoints, we'll get together as a team, and Adria's our sustainability expert, but we, as, we're the land use people, so we can say, okay, these are our land use recommendations, how can we make them better from a sustainability's perspective or resilience perspective? They've also done a lot of really good work at the regional environmental team to do like a land use strategies toolkit where we can pull from that too. So we will kind of leverage our shared knowledge and know, we're really good in this area, but how can we use Adria or use Gloria for equity engagement? So trying to try to do that as much as possible.
One final question from me, and then I'll turn it over. Having worked on so many master plans, there's got to be a defining characteristic that, you know, I could look at a stack of 100 from across the country that would, and I would be able to say, hey, that's an MAPC plan. What would that characteristic be?
That's a good question.
Yeah, I, I would say the focus on the community and, and the engagement, I think that's been both a strong point and a focus of our work. And I think that as a regional planning agency, you know, presenting at national planning conferences and the like, that MAPC has been a leader in, is focusing on both expanding the sheer number of people involved in planning processes, but also the, the equity and breadth and depth of people who are involved in the planning processes and getting people who are not typically showing up at a evening planning meeting to be involved in a process like this. And Gloria touched on that in her presentation. But I think that would be one of the things that I think about as a hallmark of our work in that we're always bringing that lens to our work, because it's, it's nice to kind of solve the technical issue or come up with the right answer, but if you don't communicate it the right way or get the community involved, it just won't have the same legs in terms of getting it done as, as if you were to have the community with you along the way.
I'll add, so I did a lot of planning in Washington State and South Carolina before coming to Massachusetts. And one of the things that's really been refreshing here is implementation, and I think MAPC really does a good job of thinking about the implementation piece when we work with communities. We're actually working with Rhythm right now and thinking about how they're going to implement their plan. We recommend implementation committees as a way to not just stop community engagement once the plan is done, but how can you leverage that momentum and keep those same people engaged because they already did so much work to get to the master plan and get it approved or adopted, however you may choose to do it? But then how can we continue that momentum with implementation and actually see it through so that it doesn't get dusty on a shelf like unfortunately a lot of other places can sometimes happen?
So how does that, with the implementation committee, how does that, does that overlap with the steering committee, or is it typically other people who are brought in later? Or how does that go?
It, it happens both ways, that sometimes you'll have a member which has the endurance to be on the implementation committee as well. It can be different groups. Typically, we see as a best practice that an implementation committee is impaneled sort of by the planning board and the select board, and has sometimes representatives from each board as well. And then along with other sort of planning umbrella professionals that might be a part of the town in terms of their residents, like maybe real estate professionals of some kind, or in the design industries, architects, engineers, landscape architects, attorneys that are related to land use in some way. So you, you'll probably have some of those assets that are part of the community, and if you could tap them to be a part of the implementation committee, it's a real benefit to help move those things forward. Usually it's like a six to eight type person committee, and then they have, in some communities, they'll give that committee a small line item budget at town meeting, which is a benefit to give follow-up studies, or if they need to hire a consultant of some kind, help move a type of idea forward. Those are, those are things, you know, you don't need to do all those things, but it is good. That's one of the most effective ways that we've seen for a master plan to have a, a life after the plan becomes fully adopted and completed.
And I would just add, part of, another part of our focus on the community engagement team is building relationships throughout the planning process. So these committees, these implementation committees wouldn't be starting from scratch. We would be tracking our stakeholders that we'd be engaging over the course of the master plan process and sort of sharing those back with you all, to then of course share with the implementation committees so that they know who's already been engaged, who's involved, who's sort of really passionate about this particular topic or the other. So again, that engagement process sort of feeds into that longer-term implementation in that sense.
What's the timeframe? I know, I think it was in the document you provided previously, but what's your, I guess, just so we're all aware, what, what is the timeframe?
I think you all had laid out about a year and a half, and that was what we tried to stick with. So we, we put out, I guess it was, it started in, maybe a little optimistically in November, but I think, say later November, December, maybe we get a start. And then had the phase one, which concluded with the visioning of the, the first effort, would conclude, I think we had it around April or so of 2023. And then that gives us the remainder of 2023 dipping into a little bit of 2024 to move down through the topics in terms of goals, strategies, then the implementation plan. So I think we had the, like a draft plan and comment period landing, it was like January or February 2024 or something like that.
Would that be typical of a, a master plan process for you?
Yeah, I would say that's pretty, it's within the window of typical. So I'd say that between a year and a half and two years is probably the sweet spot in terms of what's typical. Anything faster than that, and it does start to feel a little rushed from the community's perspective, just in terms of how many times you can have a big meeting or get people to stay involved. If you go longer, you also have a similar problem in terms of keeping people's interest in a process and, and to have the sort of response that, you know, we've moved from, through those three steps that we've outlined, you want to move through them, you know, pretty good order so that people can stay, keep their attention on the process. But yeah, it's, I would say, yeah, two, anything more than two years and it gets a little bit long.
Understandable, very understandable.
Our individual, sorry?
Go ahead.
Are individual community engagement sessions or, or town meetings like this topic-specific? Or are you hit with 12 different topics and you don't really get to draw in the individual groups that have a stake?
It's a, it's a unique problem for master plans, that you have a lot, a lot to cover in terms of the amount of topics and what to get through. What we've typically found is successful is to actually break them into, say like three part, three groupings. So you'd have, we've done it where if you have a open house around goal setting, then you'd have a series of three meetings actually around goal setting. And that, so you basically cover three topics in each meeting, if you had three meetings and nine topics. And that way, you can actually get people to roll their sleeves up a little bit more around transportation, have a, a meaningful conversation with the community within that session. Additionally, what we've also found, found successful, and I'll maybe Gloria give you a chance to, I don't want to hog the mic, but the, doing focused, focused groups, so either with people who are interested in that topic, you say, you know, we're doing a session around transportation, people can come to that. But also that's a, a way to really effectively invite your local experts. So DPW, town engineer, get those folks in the same room and help, help bring their local knowledge into this process. And then the, the other approach is to do things where people can respond on their own. So either through online surveys, through virtual open houses or other settings, you give people all of the information, but make it clear that they don't have to do everything. If they're only, only interested in housing, they can give us feedback on housing only. If they really want us to take the time to go through the nine topics, they're welcome to do so. But to give people an easy access way to hit the topics that they want to do, sort of à la carte.
Yeah, I think Josh covered it really well already. Maybe just pulling back a little bit to give you a bit of a sense of how we think about engagement broadly on the MAPC team is both breadth and depth. So reaching a broad audience of as, as many people as we can sort of catch as they move through their daily lives in Norfolk as possible. Also sort of capturing all of those breadth of topics that would be part of the master plan. And then as it makes sense, in a targeted manner, looking at, in depth at particular topics, reaching particular community members in a more equitable manner, who might not have the capacity to attend a meeting like this. So there's sort of that horizontal breadth and then that vertical targeted depth. And I think the examples that Josh gave sort of illustrate both of those perspectives.
That just reminded me of one other. I think that one of the magic, the magical parts of master plan is the synergy between the topics. So the other thing we want to try to do is not, not, not make it such that someone who wants to only interact with transportation as a topic will see the town master planning process only through that lens. We want to give people the, the overlap of those nine topics as well, because that's where the magic happens, I think, between, in a process like this, to find strategies that positively impact four or five of those topics. Those are, those are the really good things to identify in a process like this. So we, that's what we want to try to also provide the opportunity to get those synergies working as well, and not just have people introduce, get introduced to the master plan through one siloed topic. So we're trying, in our process that we've outlined for ourselves and our internal workflow and in the approach with the community engagement, we're trying to desilo the topics as much as we're trying to make it convenient to engage with a single one.
And I'll just add, that's how people relate to planning. Like people don't think about, housing is one track, transportation is one track. People naturally want to combine those, and so that's what we've been doing with Rhythm is like thinking about the themes that came out of the master plan. It has an economic development tie and a housing tie and a transportation tie. That's what people care about. They don't care about us needing to do our planning elements in the specific way. So trying to like, again, just get back to how are we going to most connect this to people and like what they need to know about their community through this process? And how can we make it as digestible and less wonky? It's hard because we like wonky things as planners, but we really try to not make it too like unappealing or kind of planner speak.
So I think synergy is a great word, especially with regards to Rhythm and the work that you're doing there, especially since we share a school district with them. Having worked with Rhythm and, you know, having this possibility of working with Norfolk as well, what synergies do you see between the two? And what opportunities could Norfolk or Rhythm take advantage of with MAPC at the helm?
Yeah, yeah, I think, I mean, easy and obvious one that immediately jumps to mind are things like the Mediacomic Greenway and, and that as a critical, I think, forward-thinking multimodal pathway through Norfolk, Rhythm and other communities, that's, that will be a huge deal and I think a really strong benefit in the region to move something like that forward. I think there will be, there will be like-minded themes, I think, that emerge in this planning process as well. Walkability is, is a very big deal in many of our planning processes today. I think it's, it's seen for communities which, positioned like Norfolk, which had a more suburban origin story, or even rural origin story, to be competitive really as a place that's attracting the same quality of life that people are expecting. Walkability needs to be brought up to the next level, and that's something that we heard a lot in walk, or in, in walkable Rhythm. In Rhythm, but that's, I, I think something where people want to see strategic investment, want to see their sort of neighborhood area in the place around where they live be enhanced in that way. So I wouldn't be surprised if we hear that as a recurring theme as well. Other, other thoughts from Rhythm?
Yeah, I think a lot of what we heard was open space preservation. You know, they have really beautiful rural parts of Rhythm, and I think that is the same here, where how can we keep those places kind of how they are, they're perfect? And like, think about it in where can we have new jobs and people go? Town center is a clear no-brainer here in Norfolk. That kind of came up in Rhythm too. They're, they want to have a more vibrant downtown that people want to go to, that small businesses can thrive in. So I think that the things that we heard in that regard will probably come up here too. And we can think about how Norfolk and Rhythm can work together to achieve those shared objectives.
So obviously, this is going to have to get voted on by the town and accepted, and you've gone through this process hundreds of times at this point. What are some of the, the most glaring criticisms that you've heard at one of these town meetings of one of your plans, if you don't mind sharing?
Well, typically, we would advise you not to take the master plan to a town meeting vote. We would, we would, so the, the master plan is an instrument of the planning board. So we would advise that the master plan is approved and adopted by your board. We would, we typically recommend a presentation of the master plan to the town meeting and making sure that there, that, that sort of conversation is brought full, full circle, particularly in this case, since the, a large portion of the funding for this process was approved through town meeting. But a, a town, I mean, while it's not, I'm trying to think of an example, like, I don't know if I can think of a town that has done a town meeting, adopted master plan recently. It's up to you, you could do it, but I think there, there are potentially issues in the, particularly if you framed it as, well, it would depend a little bit how you framed it, but I think it's, it's, we would typically not see that as a, as an approach at the end of the process. The impanelment of a master plan implementation committee is sometimes a The impanelment of a master plan implementation committee is sometimes a town meeting vote. The follow-on studies or, or maybe implementation dollars or, or reconfiguration of the town budget in some way to become better aligned with the master plan vision, that would also be a town meeting effort. So there, there are certainly a lot of good reasons to keep the town meeting fully involved and informed, but actual plan adoption may not be one of them. I, I don't mean to skirt the
No, no worries, no worries, that's fine.
That actually does make sense because what you hear is, I don't know about, about you guys, when you're chatting with your friends in town and, you know, they have all sorts of opinions, when you're having a couple of drinks or you're out to dinner, like, we should do this in the town center, we should do that in the town center, we should or shouldn't do this. Those are not the same people that come to the meeting.
Right, oh, absolutely, you're right.
So, you know, so you're creating, so there's that, I think Justin said earlier, the silent majority, you know? And so I think when you bring it to a town meeting, to your point, that is tricky, you've worked with this group of people potentially, you know, coming to these focus groups or whatever we've bribed them into doing, but then by the time you get to town meeting, those are not the same people that are voting. So I just, there's a disconnect there.
Well, we do, I mean, ideally, we do want to engage, I mean, it shouldn't, the hope through a process like this is that when you get to, towards the end of the process, however you want to adopt the plan, that it shouldn't be a surprise to anyone in the town that this process has occurred and, and what sort of major features of the planned content are. Maybe not the details, maybe not sort of getting down into the strategies and actions, but should know, have a general feel for, these are the main issues that were identified, these are the solutions that we're thinking about. So we, I mean, that, I guess that's one of the things that should be predictable because it happens almost all the time, is that you will have someone show up at the 11th hour that says, I didn't know this was happening. And, and I don't agree with what your foundational conclusions are, or, you know, something like that. And so you do have to deal with those voices, they, I feel like we can probably predict pretty easily that they will be present. But usually, sort of kindness and invitation disarms those usually what start as confrontational or accusational voices. And if we bring typically that, what we'll find, we're actually fun, not to, I don't, we're in the Rentham public comment period presently, and so we're getting some of those types of comments in that public comment period. And, and I'm in the process presently of engaging with some of those voices via email mostly, but just saying like, you know, thank you for your very detailed comments, we're sorry you didn't get a chance to engage in the process along the way, but just responding in that way, usually now, like I'm, I feel like I'm friends with a few of them now because we're, we're going back and forth almost every day. But, you know, you, there's valuable input that they can provide, even if it is from our perspective, probably not from their perspective, because everyone lives a busy life, but from our perspective is a little late in the process, but it's nonetheless very good feedback and we'll accept it however, however it comes. And in, in the process of accepting that feedback, hopefully helping people understand that this, this is an vast conspiracy, we're trying our best to keep everyone involved and engaged. And so that's, I think that's a part of it, probably one of the things that we can expect as we get towards the end.
So speaking of all that, you were part of the B1 process here in our town, and you probably recall all the obstacles and roadblocks that we had to endure during that. I got kind of in on the tail end of that, that, and the whole process started long before I joined the planning board. So what, I guess, what are the key takeaways from that, you know, lessons learned that we can try and avoid with the master plan?
Yeah, I, I, very specifically, I'm not sure if we put it into our proposal language, but I, I would definitely integrate early and often the advisory committee as part of the master plan process. I think that what became very evident in the B1 zoning is that the advisory committee is a very important body in, in the town. And to have them understand what is being discussed in these, in this process, where it might be headed in terms of implementation activities and, and keeping them well-informed along the way, I would consider them, in this, in the context of Norfolk and how your governance operates, as we often do, of course, keeping the planning board with us lockstep along the way, so you're not surprised by anything. Trying to keep the select board similarly engaged, that they're on board with us and supportive and the town leadership, thinking about the, the town administrator and other members of the town staff and keeping them at least as knowledgeable as, or as involved as they want to be or can be. And then I would include the advisory committee in that same sort of suite of people that we want to have, feel like they're both a part of the process, but also have ownership of the content as it, as it evolves and as we hear from them and others in the community and not, we don't want any of those groups to feel like we show up only when, when we want to get to that moment. So we're going to town meeting next week to present this master plan and here's, here's the key features of the master plan, and we don't want that to be the first time that they've heard about it.
And as much as my job is to think about how we engage the community broadly, one of the first questions I ask on any project that I work on is, who's the decision maker on this? With a master plan, it makes sense, there are probably more decision makers and layers there, but, you know, we want to make sure that when it comes to the point of making that decision, like Josh said, they know what's going on, they have all of the context of what input we've heard from other places and are sort of fully informed on that point.
And I will just add that you will have a steering committee with this process, and I think that's the first opportunity to be really strategic about who's on that steering committee and who's going to be the biggest kind of champion or advocate for this planning process and also who has the most friends, so that they can like keep people informed in those informal networks. I think that's really effective because like you said, people are going to go out, they're going to like see each other walking on the street and maybe say like, did you hear about this meeting? What, what's this about? So more people like that, that we can get involved in the process. That's, we'll make a really robust community engagement strategy we do with all of our projects and continue to have it evolve as if we find someone early in the process who's like, what is going on? Then we'll go back to the drawing board and clearly we had a hole, so let's fix that hole.
But how many would you recommend for a steering committee? How many individuals?
We normally do like between 15 and 20. It sort of depends on the community. You want enough so that if people don't show up, then you still have a good group to deliberate. If you do too small of a number, then you run into not having enough representation or attendance. So how many were on Rentham's?
I think Rentham was around either 13 or 15. I know it was an odd number, I think it was in that.
And so that's something you'll help us identify key areas to, to pick for, for that committee? Okay.
Yeah, we can help with that process and kind of give a list of the types of boards, committees, commissions that would be good to have a member on. I think there's also, it's good to have like an at-large sort of call that you put out through whatever mechanisms you have in the town to get just some general residents who are interested in being a part of this process, that's a very important kind of constituency to have present, but we also do want to try to be selective about having some boards, committees and others represented. I will, I will say, I think in your RFP, it was kind of a little more open as to whether or not there would be a committee or not a committee. I think in our proposal, we advocated for a committee. We've worked in both setups. We've worked without a master plan committee, in which case the planning board is the committee for the process, and we worked with a dedicated master plan steering committee. They both have their pros and cons, I would say, like, it's not, it's not impossible to do it one way or the other. And there are benefits in both. I, I've found it's most difficult actually on you all, on the planning board, when it is, the board is the committee, because you have other items you need to cover in meetings and agendas to get through and projects to review and approve. And it's sometimes therefore difficult to carve out the time, even just in meetings, to get the agenda time necessary to really get into the details of what a master planning committee could get into.
Good information. So I'm sure you had a chance to review our current master plan from 2007, all right? I think that's right. So are there any, I guess, glaring issues that need to be addressed immediately? You know, what is that, that first thing that we should tackle? What just jumps out like, oh my gosh, that needs to, you know, it's now 15 years down the road and we missed the mark on that and we got to take care of this right now?
Yeah, I don't know that anything jumps out quite like that because you guys have been doing a lot of work since that time. So I think, I think one, one of the things that I would say maybe is more glaring as a first step is actually to take, which we did not do as part of our preparation, but to take the previous master plan and compare it to the activities which the town has undertaken in those intervening years and see if there are any of those items which were highlighted or recommended from your previous master plan that haven't been touched at all, investigate why, like what, is there a reason, were they investigated in some way, this just doesn't show up, was there a good reason why it was a dead end? Or was it just kind of left and other activities move forward? So that, that type of accounting of the implementation activities that have occurred from the previous plan is a very valuable first step and tool to be able to unpack both lessons of what's moved forward, but also help us to think about how do we avoid some of those roadblocks if there were some for particular activities. I think it will also, that type of analysis will show great progress and I think is something that's also important to hold up, both as a planning board and as a master plan process, is that things have happened since the last plan, so that there's a lot of good activity that, that helps to eliminate concerns about planning fatigue or why are we doing another master plan, didn't we just do a plan, or the last planning process just got over? And to point to things like the, the B1 efforts and how that has a long history and legacy, which began with the previous master plan and subsequent studies, and there's been a lot of very detailed effort which has occurred since then. Similarly, things like the, the Southwood property, which have been a concern for many years, if not decades, and how, how to get that property unlocked and approached. But I, I think the accounting of master plan implementation is, is one of our big steps that we might not have as defined concretely, but I feel like that's, it's a critical one that will, will kind of give a better, if we do that, we'll give you a better answer to, to that question.
All right, thank you.
Same, we're done.
Yeah, Rich is like, we're hitting our time. Rich, do you have any questions as town planner?
Uh, no, I don't, I think, no, I don't.
Okay, anybody else? I think that's it.
Appreciate the time.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Appreciate it. So we need to, what's, what's our process for
So I need your scoring.
For making decisions, voting?
Submit your scoring.
Okay.
In terms of evaluation.
Okay, and that's the matrix you sent us today. So we need to submit that by when? This week?
This week would be preferable.
Okay.
And then
And then we'll be in touch after we
In touch, yeah, there's references in there too, we want to touch on references, that kind of thing.
Okay.
So it sounds like unanticipated business.
Right. You guys are all set, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much, really appreciate it.
Thanks, nice to meet you all.
Appreciate it.
Drive safe, it's raining.
Yes.
Maybe we can
Sounds like the rain's stopping. Might be a break in the rain.
The rain, the rain is stopping. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Take care.
So unanticipated business, I know the, the advisory board met last week, made some recommendations on the, these are the bylaws that were pulled forth by the planning board. So perhaps you might want to talk about those recommendations at a, at a meeting and combine it with this, it's kind of, we can go review the scoring from the matrix on it and then divide up, so to speak, who may want to reach out in terms of the references.
So you're thinking a special planning board meeting to discuss the scoring for this plus the feedback from those, from the advisory meeting?
Advisory board, yes. And we would, I would propose it to be Zoom.
Yep.
To keep it
I would agree.
It's easier for you in terms of your schedules and stuff like that too, so.
And do you have a dates that you're
I don't have a date, so I'm thinking, I'm
Are we thinking like
We have to look at the calendar.
Are you thinking like two weeks from now? A week?
Does that put us too late in terms of calendar or the, what's, that's discussed, advisory board has sailed and there's no corrective action or change?
I think two weeks would be fine.
Yeah, two weeks would be fine. So the discussion will really be more next steps in terms of between now and, tell me, essentially.
Yeah. So two weeks puts us into first week of November.
Yeah. So if you want. I don't know if
For Tuesday the first?
Yeah, something like that. That's fine.
It is going to be a
Now that's a select board, isn't the first week of the month?
It would, but I was proposing to make this a Zoom meeting, so you wouldn't have to worry about a physical space.
Okay.
So we do via Zoom.
Okay. I'd be, that works? Work for you, John?
So that's November 1st?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then maybe, John, you could have your fire going and be a little, maybe a little cooler, November 1st?
So we're meeting at John's house?
No, no. You all won't fit. What was it, just me and John? No, but he's got the fire, I just, you know.
I love me a fireplace, man.
Yeah. All right.
Okay, any other new business? Is that it?
Well, that's it for tonight.
Okay.
There is just a quick update. Rich and Gary and I are going to the Small Business Association meeting a week from today. So we'll go through the signage and get some feedback and then we can review it all with all of the
That's right.
And if anybody else wants to come.
Well, we
Oh, you can't.
Well
Open meeting.
We can have, so you're, so she's an associate, we could have two members plus one associate and not have a quorum? Or should we just not worry about that and just one member, one associate and be
Yeah, I think we just keep the model.
Okay.
I appreciate the offer, but I'm, then it's a public meeting and then, yeah, yeah, it changes everything.
Totally forgot.
I'm not going.
Not going.
Just not going.
Okay.
So that's great, excellent. I think that's it then, right?
That's it.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are done.
Woo!